Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, March 4th, 2024 at 6:00 PM, and I will call to order the Freetown Board of Select meeting. In today's meeting, we will be going into executive session and then coming back into open session. This meeting will be recorded and will be available on the town's YouTube page. We are going into executive session for the following reason. Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, "To discuss reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline, or dismissal of, or complaints, or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual." So with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sleckman Lopes?
Yes.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, we are now in executive session. Alright, everybody, we're now back from executive session in open session, and I'll move on to agenda item one. This is the executive session minutes from 2/20/2024. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve but not release the executive session minutes from 2/20/2024.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda item two. This is open session minutes from 2/20/2024. So I'll entertain a motion whether approve the open session minutes from 2/20/2024.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, and now we're gonna kick it over to Chief Rose for results on the citizen survey for programs and services.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to take the time and throw it up here on the display screen, but it's just gonna take me a quick second. Thank you. Should be connecting here soon. So, again, the Freetown Police Department took the time and executed and pushed out a citizen survey to the public in regards to future programs and services. We used the Google Forms, Google platform to be able to push out this survey. And obviously, I'm pretty pleased to announce that we had received over 400 responses from the community. Exactly 413 responses contributed to this survey. And the reason for this survey was just to get a temperature, get an understanding from the community how they feel about these services and programs, and get an idea if it's, you know, we're at the town pushing forward and looking at these future programs. So I believe I made packets for, you know, the board and the town administrator, but again, this is important for us to at least push out to the public as well, so they can see where their input, you know, resulted in our survey. So off the bat, you can see that the survey asked the, you know, the residents of town if you were a town resident or not, and close to 90% of the responders were actually town residents. So that's very important. Not to, you know, include the people that are out of town, but it definitely has a bigger impact for the residents in town. And the next question, you know, working in town, again, it's showing that a majority of the people actually work out of town, not in our community, but that, again, that's okay. Just gives us a sense, you know, where they're working. Big question, do you regularly travel through town? So these people that responded, just about 95% of them do travel through our town in some form or fashion. We even broke it down into the sections in-town and out-of-towns to get a clearer response where these participants were providing their information. And it was pretty much split down the middle between Asona and East Freetown, almost tabulating 90% of the responses. I believe East Freetown did edge out Asona for a little bit, not to cause it a competition, but again, it's still pretty close, and everybody basically had an equal say from both sides of town. One of the most interesting data that I found through this survey is the next portion talks about the approximate age of the participant in this survey. And we broke it down to what you see there between 15, 20, 21, and 30, 31, 40, and as you see the other categories, and the last one being over 60 years of age. And as you see the data that's presented there, the most people of the largest, you know, surveyors of the survey were over the age of 60, and that was kind of shocking. I thought maybe we'd see a little bit higher amount in the, you know, the 30 to 40 range or the 40 to 50 range. But again, they definitely had their inputs, specifically, you know, the elderly, and they, you know, we appreciate all the support and all the people in their ages. So I originally broke down the survey into two sections being services versus programs. Now, services are something that can be implemented through the operations of the police department. And the four items that I have here today is school resource officer, boat enforcement, motorcycle unit, and a drone program. So again, the kind of self-explanatory, those functions would be used on daily patrol operations throughout the year. The last section being programs, and I have three that are listed there, we'll get to that in a little bit, but again, it's just broken down to a RAD self-defense program, a citizens academy for adults, and then the final one is a junior academy for children, some type of summer camp program. But getting into the SRO results, between a strong and supportive response, you're seeing over 80% of the community being very supportive, if not strongly supportive, towards that type of program. In the past, we used to have an SRO in the school system. It was nothing but a benefit for the department as well as the community. There was a share of communication between the school system and the department, and it really worked out well to have that liaison within the school system. So I think what you're seeing there is something that we used to have, some, the community did appreciate, and now with today's climate of things going on throughout the nation, it's best to have that individual part of the school system. And through an SRO program, we can do that.
Question on that real quick. So you'd obviously have multiple schools. Would it be like hypothetically, one person who, you know, spends time at all the different schools? And, you know, it's just, it's not like someone boots on the ground at each school every day, right?
Right. So currently, we only have one public school in our community.
Yeah, okay, so just the elementary school, so like they wouldn't, does that mean, sorry, there'd be nothing at Aponequa, because that's technically in Lakeville, right?
So Lakeville has an SRO that goes between all those locations, including their elementary school. So it's a little bit different in fact, where we only have this one building in town, so they would...
That makes sense.
As we go forward, we would encourage whoever that officer is to be that, you know, do that assignment, to work with a relationship with the SRO in the Lakeville, you know, school system. In that way, we do have another form of communication and where they can both help each other, one way or the other. So I foresee, you know, if the officer over there wants our officer in the Lakeville school system for some type of presentation, I can't see why we can't support them in that, vice versa. We would invite that officer over here as well.
That would be my question, Chief. Can we get an MOA with Lakeville so that those duties can be shared?
Absolutely, absolutely. It just takes the time and spell those things out, so we have a clear understanding what the expectations are. So the next service is the boat enforcement unit. Now, I'm presenting this today because over the years, we have been struggling and kicking the can down the road dealing with the town beach and the boat ramp. Currently, what the police department has been doing is basically a reactive response to whatever the needs are to those locations. There's a call for service at the beach, we respond, we resolve the problem within minutes, and then that officer returns back to the patrol function of their sector. But as time is going on, we're finding that there is more and more activity that is taking place at these locations that needs additional resources and services. And to be able to do that, it's gonna take a program, something like this, that I envision to be able to handle those calls and needs.
I have another kind of silly Freetown-Lakeville related question, right? So if we have, say we had an officer out on a boat, and there's something going on, like on the Lakeville side of the pond, right? Like, how does that work, right? There has to be some kind of agreement there too, right?
So currently, where the neighboring communities, law enforcement agencies are part of mutual aid agreement. So the mutual aid agreement that we have in place really is already set in stone for us to deal with those issues.
That makes sense.
So if you can imagine, the pond, as large as it is, one-third of it is in the town of Freetown, and two-thirds of it, the majority, is in Lakeville. Currently, the Lakeville Police Department does have a program, and it's been received very well. It's been a benefit to deal with the issues in their community and their side of the water. They are encouraging us to help them and take part of the enforcement as well. And I can see how our program could support both entities very well by working together on dealing with the issues. But if you can imagine, between our own boat ramp, the activity that is being launched there, the public access along pond is the focal point of where the initial problems come from.
Yeah, we have to care about them all the time, so.
So I think by having a more dedicated presence with the boat ramp will definitely curtail a lot of the issues that we're experiencing over the past years. And on top of that, we would incorporate in doing the enforcement with the town beach. We'd work it out together. So it's gonna take time to design, but I wanted to push this out to the public and see what they felt about it. If they said, "No, the police department, we're not interested in the boat enforcement", look, the people have spoken through this survey, but that's not what you're seeing here, right? We're seeing, again, over 60%, very, very support, strongly supportive and supportive. So it's not going against, you know, the participants of this survey. They think it's probably a good idea.
So Chief, how, just to be speaking, how would that work? You know, I look at it, not everyone knows how to drive a boat or sail a boat, whatever the terminology is. Are you envisioning your senior staff, like your sergeants, lieutenants, getting their boat license or boat certification to be able to properly use it? I guess I'm trying to figure out how, who would be in charge and how would that get deployed?
So whatever are special assignments that we do have in the police department, there are no expectations to put somebody in that position without the proper training and equipment and the directives within policies and procedures. So there is gonna take some time to be able to get that in place. I believe that, well, let me go back. Several years ago, several Freetown officers, including myself, attended a training session with the Mass Environmental Police, where we got the initial training. Not only did we get our certification to do, operate on the waterways, but they also gave us the training to do the enforcement of the laws regarding the, you know, boat enforcement. So it's just that we have not exercised that in a regular capacity. We've not really pursued a well-organized boat enforcement program. And I'm not here to diminish that. There will probably be an expense that comes along with that to get this up and running, but I feel that, you know, there are grants that are available to support this. It's gonna take some work to get this up and running. And I think even reaching out other avenues from the public, whether it's our politicians to support us and get this program up and running. And on top of that, I just think if we get this program up and running, we'll be able to aid the Lakeville Police Department in supporting their enforcement as well with their program. So I can think of work hand in hand, but it's just gonna take some time. It's not gonna happen overnight. It's just setting up a class, getting the guys to the assignments of this type of position, and then getting the policies and procedures in place to be implemented.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. In the past, we had a motorcycle, motorcycle unit. And it's something that we experienced for a couple of years, but I wanted to push it back out in the public and how they felt about potentially re-resurrecting a motorcycle unit. And similar results, very strong support of it. Over, pretty close to 60%, people feel that they were strongly supportive or supportive of a motorcycle unit. The motorcycle unit basically would enhance motor vehicle law enforcement that's out there. It's also can be used for specialty events. They're few and far between, but again, it's a an opportunity for a resource that can be used throughout town. And then finally, the last piece of service is the drone unit. This one, I was completely floored to see the results of.
This is the one that I was surprised most, with 70%.
Right, right. So it's definitely a strong, strong support for a drone unit here in our, in our community. Now, most of us know that in the past year, we had an incident where a woman and her child were endangered, and a drone was used to actually save both parties. Well, at least the child anyways. And if it wasn't for that resource, we could be telling a different story. But both the woman and the child survived the incident. And if it wasn't for the drone, like I said, the child might be in a different situation. So what I'm getting at is during that incident, we did receive mutual aid from the town of Dayton. The response of that drone unit, I don't recall off the top, but it had to be at least 30 to 40 minutes before the drone unit got there, deployed. But once the drone was deployed, the child was found within five to 10 minutes. So there is a significant impact of having that resource. If I went a little further, and we just, you know, were considering to, you know, get a drone for our department, I would also use that drone along with the boat enforcement program as well. So it can work hand in hand in getting the eyes from the sky versus what we're just dealing with on the, on the ground or the water level. So it can be used in many forms of fashion between, you know, search and rescue, dealing with a suspect on foot in the middle of the night in the woods. There's multiple, multiple uses for the drone. It has been our practice to be reactive in the request of that drone. So an incident happens, then we call for the drone. I think if we had a drone, we would be able to implement it in a more proactive way, especially dealing with the boat and water issues. If there are issues with people out in the forest late at night, we're able to do more surveillance out there, see what's going on on the pipeline. There is many, many more proactive approaches that we could use instead of just waiting for a reactionary use of the device.
I feel like this one too, is probably, you know, at least barrier to entry to get a drone, cost-wise and training, I'm sure, you know. Probably relatively straightforward. It can't be, I'm sure these drones probably have a lot of fancy technology, but I'm sure it's not crazy expensive.
They do. They, I mean,
That's in a boat.
We recently, yeah, yes. We recently had a demonstration, and to see the options and the abilities that these drones have is just incredible.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, one of the most important things is having like the thermal imaging. You're up there at nighttime, and you want to see the heat signatures out there. I mean, that's how we found that child. It was just, it was just simply incredible. But yes, the impact of that type of technology can definitely benefit, but it does come with a cost in training. And again, this is another piece of equipment, resource, that could be supported through grants.
Yeah.
I mean, the grants that are available out there, but it takes some work, right? Grants have, grants take a lot of work.
It comes up, and we have a lot of woods in town, right? So to your point is, the offices, there's, you know, there's not usually that many officers on, so this can do the work of many.
Right.
A lot faster, so, yeah.
The drone that we had this demonstration with, you could talk through the drone to the individual. You could almost fly it down to like 10 feet and have a conversation with them and communicate, right? It's just incredible. It's just unbelievable. And you can even drop off an object, drop off a cell phone, so they can like, you know, get a ping location and try to, you know, but you're also getting that from the drone as well. There is many, many options dealing with that drone. And again, and just to finish up the survey and not to diminish the programs, again, I briefly talked about the RAD program, the citizens academy, and the junior academy. The RAD self-defense program, again, another shocking response that people really want this type of self-defense training and classes to the public. They feel it could be benefit the community. And honestly, these three programs that I'm describing is short money. It's just having the officers trained. We wouldn't, you know, charge the public for these, for this type of training. We'd probably use this room here and break down tables and chairs and be able to, you know, do a short class of say 20 or 25 individuals that want the training. The short-term money to support that program was just training the officers, and I'm already in the process of making that happen. So being proactive on that poll, on that point.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is that something that we could bring to the schools? That we could train, you know, our children with self-defense, age-appropriate?
I believe the RAD program has a number of training levels. One being adults for women, another one being for children. So currently, what I'm training the officers for is for the adult women. However, I mean, if we want to go that route, we can get them the training as well. And I'm not really sure how that would incorporate, but I would look to get.
Yeah, I've been saying all along, I think the schools should teach self-defense. I think that our teenagers especially, right? And even our young teenagers now, so that they have some awareness if something should happen, how to handle themselves. So that's, that's something that I think would be beneficial, and maybe again, we would join with, partner up with the school district.
And to kind of spin off that is the teachers as well, right? You hear stories of teachers getting attacked. So having, you could teach, you could do it for teachers, and to your point is, you know, if it's not gonna cost us a ton of money to operate this stuff, then we can try and expand it, obviously based on how well out the community responds, but.
And then finally, I'm sorry, not to cut you off. I, bad habit of doing that.
No, I will.
I apologize. And finally, the junior academy that we have listed here, again, a very strong support from the, from the community on this type of program. The, what I envision with the junior academy is something that we would see in the summer. State police have been doing this for years and having a junior academy with a set age group. And we could, and I had posted for the survey, ages from eight to 12, but we could adjust that to what we feel might benefit the community. But to have a summer program for the kids for a couple of weeks, maybe half-days, and give them an education on the aspects of the police department. And again, it's that community relation and giving the kids a sample of what we're really dealing with day in, day out, and maybe encourage some future officers here for the department.
It's recruitment, early.
Right, early recruitment. It's not early enough. The last two survey questions basically kind of broke it down to, you know, if they had to choose two of the four reso, services, which would they pick? Now, I have to apologize on this part. Initially, when I made the survey, I had placed, you know, assigned the student resource officer, SRO is a student resource officer, and Officer Madares, who is here today politely corrected me and said it should be, you know, school resource officer. And I readjusted the survey, but I didn't realize it was gonna affect the results there. But if you can imagine, take the student resource officer and the school resource officer, result in adding them together, again, it's an overwhelming response to the community that they would want to see in SRO program. And the second most leading program is a drone unit. So again, it's good feedback from the community, and we can evaluate that as we go forward as the potential opportunities of these resources could be possibly implemented.
Awesome.
And then finally, the last one is, again, asked the community to pick two of the three, which one would they pick? And it was the RAD self-defense program and the junior academy. No offense, adults, you took like third place in that. Not that we couldn't have a, you know, an adult citizens academy, which I think is important too, to see, have the adults in here and see what we're doing a part of our duties and responsibilities. It'd be important for them to be a part of that as well, but yeah. So we're seeing RAD program, the junior academy being well thought for.
Awesome.
Any other questions about the survey?
I think this is awesome. I think it's, I'm really, you know, happy you took the initiative to put this out there. And I think, you know, as soon as I saw this, I should talk to Debbie about it. So, you know, I think more departments should do this similar kind of, you know, outreach. And, you know, I think one thing like, you can keep doing this, move forward. Say we narrow it down, and you can ask more specific questions about, you know, what programs and what they want to offer. I think it's a great, great way to, you know, have engagement with the community, so.
I concur.
Yeah.
So 413 responses. I can't ask for anything more.
Yeah.
Maybe I can ask the public, can we double that next time? You know what I mean? So yeah, pour it on. We'd love to see the responses.
Heck, that's more than we get at town meetings sometimes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for your time. It's just, it's, you know, again, a temperature gauge to see what the public thinks. And yeah, doing these surveys is definitely easy enough to do. Maybe we'll push out some more in the future.
Awesome.
Chief, thank you so much.
Thanks, Chief. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now I'll move on to agenda item four. This is a request from the Tuesday Club of Asona to have exclusive use of the bandstand for the annual strawberry festival on 6/16/2024. Any questions or concerns, any issues with that? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the Tuesday Club of Asona's request to have exclusive use of the bandstand for the annual strawberry festival on 6/16/2024, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we have agenda item five. This is a request from Hard Rock Racing to utilize town roads for the mixtape event on 4/7/2024. They got all their paperwork and everything in. That's an early bike race.
Yeah.
It's gonna be cold, potentially.
I like the name of it, Mixtape, brings back memories.
They've done this for a couple of years. Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request from Hard Rock Racing to utilize town roads for the mixtape event on 4/7/2024.
Motion made.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, Trevor, where in town would that be?
So it's, I want to say, I should look at the thing.
It's in the state forest.
Yeah, they, there's just like a couple of spaces where they have to cross public roads.
Oh, okay.
And they've been doing it for a lifetime, yeah.
47.98 miles that they do.
It's crazy.
And yeah, so, but I'm trying to look at where.
I want to say, like, yeah, Chipaway up there. They might, but they cross over when they go to, you know, you have to cross like Bullock Road, I think at one point.
Yeah.
Copacabana, yeah, I'm trying to see Old Fall River Road, what's Hiskville Road, so yeah, there, I mean, they're all over the place, but yeah.
Okay, so not much impact on traffic.
No, no.
Thanks.
Yeah. And I know they've done it a couple of years in the past and haven't had any issues, so.
It's a lot of roads. Actually, when you go through the list of different areas they have to cross, it's a lot of logistics.
Freetown State Forest is big.
Yeah.
Okay, agenda item six. This is.
Trevor, did we vote on it?
I think we did vote on it, right? I think we did.
Yes, we voted.
Yeah. It was a fast vote, but we voted.
They did vote, and then you asked a question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, agenda item six, this is a request from friends of Matapoise at Bike Path to utilize town roads for the Tour de Creme. Am I saying that right?
It is. It's an ice cream.
It is. It's an ice cream run.
On 5/19/2024. So this is probably more road bikes, you know? And they, but they got all their information in?
They do.
Is the, and the chief's okay with it?
Yes, both chiefs.
Okay.
Highway, border health all the time.
This one probably goes.
Starts in Dartmouth, I think.
Yeah, well, yeah. And Mattapoy said.
This one runs along Dr. Briley Road.
I know it goes down, um, by Annie's because they stop at Annie's.
It hits at Annie's and it's a Dr. Briley Road. And then it goes along Point Road and, and then to Marion Road, Neck Road and back. And it hits Robbins Nest, another ice cream shop in, closer to Wareham. Then goes Mary's Pond Road to New Bedford, Captain Bonny's in New Bedford. And then heads, uh, towards like.
Do they eat ice cream in every stop?
I don't know. Maybe if they're biking that much, they might need it. I don't know. This country with.
Robbins Nest.
Don't you go up in a cushionette? Yeah?
Yeah.
All right, that's cool. All right, any issues?
No.
Questions, concerns?
No.
Okay, with that, excuse me, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request from friends of Mattapoy at Bike Path to utilize town roads for the Tour de Creme Event on 5/19/2024.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then agenda item seven, so this is discussion and vote on potential locations for the Veterans Chair. And I think we have a, I think the Veterans Chair is not, not moving.
Yes, I think at the, uh, we, we put our, we put our heads together the other day, um, with Carl, Luann, myself, Tim, and we really had a powwow about the Veterans Chair and we are going to move, because of the construction we've got going on, we are going to move some cabinets. Um, it will have more wall space once the new construction is done. So it's, it's gonna stay put. During construction, we'll probably move it on to the second floor, just because we're doing a lot of construction downstairs, just keep it safe. We can put it up in the hallway, up in the second floor. We, we have room in the corner. But it'll come back to its home once construction started, which construction, we don't even know when that's going to start right now. So it's probably going to be May. It'll go upstairs. When we're done, it'll come back downstairs to its home where it is right now. And it'll stay there. So, and so finally put this issue to bed.
Yes.
Is Officer Ryan Ferreira aware of this?
Um, I know that he was going, he, he was gonna move it, but we told them not to move it, right?
Okay, so he knows.
Yeah, so we're gonna leave it where it is and I think everybody will, will be happy with that. Uh.
Well, I got a lot of pretty high pleased with your decision. Because I was kind of disappointed in the fact that it was going to be moved from that location and at least go to where it was, discussed about where it was going. As you know, the, the purpose of that, uh, display is to get more visibility so that the public knows that that's a separate place that I made a woman made. And that's what it deploys. So I mean, uh, although I was not happy about talking about going to senior center, it is a location, but it would be in the corner down there and it wouldn't get the maximum visibility that I think it deserves. So I'm kind of glad that you decided to keep it there. And, uh, great.
Awesome. Perfect. So should we vote on to keep it there?
You can, if you want to put this to bed once and for all.
Any, any other questions or concerns?
No, I, I agree with, I agree with him. More visibility, the better. And it's honoring our, our fallen and missing, so.
All right, perfect. All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, vote to leave the Veterans Chair where it currently resides.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're passing on, uh, agenda item eight.
Yes.
And then, agenda item nine, this is discussion vote whether, um, as road commissioners, oh, sorry.
Excuse me, Trevor. Bob. Is that a question on the shed? Sorry. I'm related. The shed, it's gone?
It's been removed from the Long Pond Boat Ramp, but it's, it's still.
Oh, yeah, it's at the transfer station. Is it something you were gonna put, um, town stuff in?
No.
No, it was personal use? Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
My transfer station?
Yeah.
Thanks, Bob.
All right. So now, moving on to agenda item nine, this is, uh, vote on whether road commissioners, wow, whether as road commissioners, the board selectmen can do the following, um, A, B, and C. So A is intend to, uh, to approve the acceptance of GM Way, formerly Three Friends Street, B, refer this approval to the planning board for their action, and C, place an article the next town meeting for acceptance of this road. So we have some funky process procedures, I think.
Yeah, so there's a little, there is, the procedures are a little bit outdated, uh, but currently the town procedures say the selectmen have to refer, uh, the road back to the planning board to get approval. And then it will come back to this board and technically we have to lay out the road and then it can go to town meeting. So this is the procedure. It's already been to the planning board. They've already, um, they're satisfied with everything. I think the highway surveyor is satisfied with everything. But tonight's procedurally, I'm gonna have you refer it back to the planning board. They are gonna give me a something in writing and we will put it on another meeting, which technically will lay it out. And it will end up on the town meeting one unless there's an issue that you, that you don't want that to happen. But from everything that I've seen, all of the, um, pertinent, you know, the boards conservation, planning, uh, the review engineer, highway have all signed off on this project. It's just procedurally, the way our, our procedures are currently written, which that's why, uh, Victoria and myself and her board are rewriting those.
Yeah.
So that they'll be more clear in the future.
And just right, like, this is a net, a net new cul-de-sac, right? A road in Assonet off of Main Street or technically off of Friends Street.
Oh, yeah, it's off, uh, Main Street.
Yeah.
But the address is off.
Friends Street, yes, that makes, does make sense.
So you said the layout, we would have to determine the layout of it? Because I'm saying, it's already, it's interesting because the road's already been paved, right?
Yeah, no mask.
That was up with the planning board, so that bond has been released by the planning board. Everything a hundred percent complete, so last step that you get the town approved of the road is the town.
Yeah, this is.
It's procedurally, what you have to call it, you have to technically lay out the road based on mass general law. It's not that the world will change, it's just the procedure.
That's why I, I, I had a funny feeling that, that we weren't gonna be telling them to move around pavement.
No.
Yeah.
It's just funny that that's the way it has to work. But you said going forward, we're trying to rework this, these procedures or policies so that we can.
Go in a logical order.
Yeah, so that it.
So that we, we don't have to have, uh, a developer or a resident come in front of us multiple times.
Right.
Procedurally, we need to go to the planning board first to get release of everything. So as they do that, they voted to accept the road, so they've already done all of this. And they sent a letter to the selectmen saying it was accepted by them, the town highway surveyor, the engineers, drafted the draft deed, everything that's needed for the process. So to go back to the planning board now, you know, I assume I'm gonna have to get on the agenda for a meeting to make sure it gets done.
Yeah, and then you gotta wait for them, yeah.
I mean, Victoria's on top of it. I don't know that you need to go, but she's going to take care of whatever, um.
Yeah, it's just, um, we certainly wouldn't want to wait the 45 days, then we're gonna miss the 4/4 date of having it put on a warrant, so.
Yeah.
Did we already put it on another agenda to lay it out? I think we might have. So we are already gonna put it back and officially lay it out, um.
Just so that you don't have to, I, I guess that's why I was asking, right? So that going forward, that if something like this comes up again, you or no one else has to deal with that because it just doesn't seem fair to people, so.
Yeah, they just need to lay it out. Uh, I think planning board's number one, they send it to the selectmen and then the selectmen can do what they have to do in the road commissions.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, so we fixed that. We'll have to, we'll vote on this for now and then.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the acceptance of GM Way, refer this approval to the planning board for their action, and place an article on the next town meeting for acceptance of this road.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then while you're here, we're gonna move agenda item 14 to now. And this is discussion of vote, um, on comparison of force main options for the sewer line. So we have a couple, two different options on the diameter, I guess, and the
Yeah.
Capacity. I don't, I don't know anything about this stuff.
Okay, so they've asked me to come and just speak. Um, I was involved with the original sewer design, um, that was done about 10, 12 years ago. Um, we looked at all of Assonet to try to figure it out. That kind of got dropped. Um, and now with the grant, be able to take a look at it again. So there are two options. It looks like this piece is just Alexander to, I assume the manhole outside the Stop and Shop pump station up by the, um, Brightman Sawmill location. So, um, there's a piece and they show 8,200 feet. I'm not sure if that's the whole piece. From Alexander Court to the other side of Route 24, where we have our solar field and a, um, entrance into our old pit. There is no infrastructure in the road in that location and that's all Mass Highway. From our property to, um, Stop and Shops tie-in, there's an eight-inch force main that we installed at our cost, um, probably about 12 years ago. It's an eight-inch epoxy lined, um, pipe. I don't, I know they show, um, camera and whatnot. Camera's a good idea. Being flushed, it's never had anything in it, so it's clean. Uh, epoxy lining lasts for a long time. So the quality of the pipe is very good. There's talk about trying to slip line it with six inch, totally impossible. Six-inch HTP pipes outside diameter is roughly seven inches. And when you weld it together, you, in a 40-foot length, when you push that together, you get a rib that goes around that joint that could be from a quarter of an inch to three eighths. So that adds another half inch to three quarters of an inch for the diameter of the pipe. So it's impossible to slide that through, um, an eight-inch duct line. Not only that, the eight-inch isn't with a sewer main, a force main, you're not worried about bending around a corner, up and down. You do have two culverts that have 45s, those would have to be treated, uh, differently, but, um, even a straight line, you'd never put a six inch in. Um, we've tried to put four inch in an eight inch. If you have a perfectly straight shot, you may get it, not a long distance, but you might get 500 feet at a time. Have to cut the pipe and do it again. It is possible, but, um, if there's any way possible in future use to stay with the eight inch, the eight inch being epoxy line might be a quarter of an inch smaller. Makes your numbers a little bit better, but, um, certainly doesn't take it down to a six-inch pipe.
So, yeah.
So looking at the, uh, program that, um, even though the pump station and the pumps cost more, you have future development that ever needs a lot of flow, you've got no way to take the six inch back out. Once you get that in, you're gonna be, even if it was a four inch, you'd be jamming it in that pipe. To try to get it back out and keep the integrity of the main probably won't happen. So, you know, the eight inch, when we put it in, Boston Beer was around and that was the reason it was probably eight instead of six. The development we were looking at was almost 30,000 gallons a day. So between Boston Beer and our development, um, the flow was there. They talked about if our development went in by itself, we may have to give it some makeup water. Because the water can't stay in the pipe for a long period of time. It becomes stagnant and sour. So they have to move a certain amount of water. Um, and if it's not available, you'd have to make it up. And it basically could be non-portable water, like water from the dam or something like that. But it would have to have additional water.
Yeah, I, basically, um, my concern was to not to, you know, they're saying that we, the design only calls for a six-inch pipe. There's an eight-inch pipe in there. And I said, it's gonna be cheaper for us to use the existing eight-inch pipe and I prefer to do that. They said, well, to do that, you have to upsize the, the pump, which is what this, this kind of shows you. And it being the decision that it is, because we have to upsize the pump, I thought it would be best to bring it before the board and have this kind of, uh, you know, pros and cons. So it's basically, do we down, you know, leave the pipe as is, upsize the pumping station, which is gonna cost us a little bit more money. But if you look at those second page bottom, construction costs, it ends up saving us money overall. And then, you know, because, uh, Mr. Azendis is so familiar with all of this, I thought it would be good for him to interject because I remember him saying that there was no way to sleeve that eight inch with a six inch.
Yeah.
So we may be thinking this all makes sense to put a six inch and then get into it and we end up replacing the whole pipe anyways. And now we've just spent a ton more money. So I, I'm glad, because I, I thought I heard that's what you said in one of the meetings, is that it's really not possible.
There is slip lining, which they go in and they actually put a cement lining inside. Actually costs you more money to pump because it's now a, um, a rougher material.
Yeah.
Well, that's what they're talking about.
Cement line picks up more bacteria. Oh, they're actually talking about an HDP pipe slid inside.
Yeah, okay.
On one of them, um, so.
I don't want to Band-Aid things either, right? That's what we always talk about is that unfortunate, fortunately, but unfortunately, depending on who you talk to, the town's evolving, right? And so why would we bring stuff down at this point to save a few bucks when?
Right.
It could cost us.
Well, in the end, it's cheaper in the long run.
And I, I mean, I do worry about what future holds, right? When all of Water Street ends up being underwater, we have to put sewer down there because we're, we've polluted the bay. You know, I worry about that. And then if we don't have, if we don't have the flow capacity, then what are we doing?
Yeah, and I was just thinking the industrial, sorry, the industrial part, right? Like if the marijuana facility, if they, like, I'm, I'm sure they're producing a ton of water.
We did get those figures. They were kind enough to have their engineer calculate what their flows are gonna be on their buildout. So we do have, we did go, we did spend a lot of time trying to get the information like from that, from American, because they're already permitted to grow. Uh, so we did get that flow of information. We did get the flow from Crystal Springs in, in the event that they would need it up, up the hill because they have a lot of septics and they go through them every two years. They put in a new septic. We did go, um, for the subdivision, uh, with the 72 units at 125 South Main Street. We did gather all the data. We did get all the projections we could get and put it into the number. And he's still saying it's a little bit too big for, um, all of that flow. But as we know, things change.
The stuff spikes off of that. Sorry, Trevor. If stuff spikes off of that, then we're, we're adding flow that we're not calculating for right now. To your point is, you know, think of all the regulations they're putting on these houses on the water with, that are related to septic, or if something happens where things get flooded out and they have to add it, then, so, yeah.
But I, like I said, I just thought it was a decision I didn't want to solely make.
No.
I don't have
I think I, I'd rather.
Expertise in this area.
I'd rather go for the bigger, you know, use the eight inch and then, you know, if we have to do the makeup water, I don't know that really, like, taking something from, you know, the river there, I don't know how that works, but.
Yeah, I think you, um, you can withdraw from the Assonet River without a problem. You can take with it up to 100,000 gallons a day without a permit from, um, water withdrawal. So, um, at some point, and I've talked to Debbie quite a bit about it, but, um, there's such a thing that is abandoned property also, whether or not we could take the 12-inch main from Churchill and Banks or now, um.
Co-Pot, that's right.
Co-Pot, um, you know, the, the timeframe has been over 20 years, um, that that line has been abandoned. Mike Pillarello was the last guy that charged that line. Uh, since then, um, with Churchill and Banks before Co-Pot, we went down to the pump station to try to get it running. It would not run. So it's been at least 15 years that, that has not been even activated. So it's, you know, it's basically abandoned in a town way. So I think that's, uh, I, we've had trouble talking to anybody from Co-Pot.
Yeah.
Churchill and Banks is struggling with the same thing. Churchill and Banks still has a, a hand in it somehow, but they just don't have the authority to sign off and give it back to the town. There was talk about the cost of the dam maintenance. It's very minimal. Chuck's been doing it anyway. Every five, six years, he'll throw new planks in the outlets and that's all it requires. Every five, six years, he'll throw new planks in the outlets, and that's all it requires. We were um hired to do all of the uh upkeep for the dam safety that came down, and um they wanted the sluice way on one side fixed, some riprap on the other side, uh updated, all that's been done. You have a little bit of brush removal once in a while. Um Chuck, he said it was no big deal to take care of that and replace the plank. So there is really no um problem with that. And with that, you would have a water main underneath uh Elm Street Bridge, or really under the river, that gets you around the bridge. You could have water across the bridge, and then the twelve inch, you talk about slip line, and at that point, you could put a six inch in the twelve inch all the way from, and I don't think you need a six inch, I think it was a four inch that they talked about from the Asona Four Corners to get you to Alexander. Uh I'm pretty sure they were gonna um go from one pump station to the other versus one pump station, try to go all the way. So the Asona uh Village would pump to Alexander, Alexander would pump. Either to, in our calculations, we couldn't get past Narrows Road, but maybe they can now with the uh bigger pumps.
Yeah.
At some point, if you do tie in Bay Shores, you would need another pump station probably at Narrows Road intersection.
Yeah, and I think we're gonna do this in stages anyways, right? So like the first stage would be getting, getting the industrial part.
You see the cost, right?
Yeah.
Fifteen million dollars.
Yeah, I don't, I don't like that number.
We did put a sleeve under um the river going up Narrows Road when we redid the culvert.
Oh, really?
So there's a sewer sleeve um that's installed so that the sewer could pass through that at a, you know, minimal cost. So you don't have to worry about getting under the river.
That's awesome. That was smart.
That was put in uh when we did the project.
Because like even like, like, you know, Jared and I, both of, you know, all three of us live in the Bay Shores, and it's been wet recently. Like, I could see a lot of these, like, you know, septics.
It's a matter of time. I mean, it may be, it may be, you know, maybe fifty years, but eventually.
There's a lot of grants out there for sewer.
Yeah.
Every year, you see a lot of cities and towns and the grants they get for replacing sewers.
Well, our problem is the M B T A zoning, right? That's gonna, if it passes, is going to require us to put so many units up there that we have to have sewer.
I don't, I don't know how, how else does it work? We don't have enough land for someone to, you know, not have sewer.
Mini sewage, mini sewage treatment plants, but I don't think you could get.
Be approved for that.
So Mr. Zendis, forgive me for not knowing this, but you said that we, the town, paid for the line to make it to Stop and Shop?
No, that was paid privately. You had to give them an easement to put it in the town layout. But according to some of the information that I received, and like I I have nothing in writing to tell you about, but they talked about abandoned properties uh in a right-of-way of a town road that so many years, it becomes and goes back to the town.
That makes sense.
And we can tie off of their line because they they put it in, right? A-hole, Stop and Shop. They put that line.
They put that line in for fire protection. The fire protection is no longer needed. It used to feed the pond that did the fire protection. It actually, it wasn't into the building for the fire protection. It was only to feed the pond that fed the fire protection. That's no longer needed now that they have the far river water main that takes care of their fire protection. So the reservoir that was built, which is now on Copart's property, doesn't need to be refilled anymore. It gets the groundwater and the runoff water that it needs. And they don't need a lot of fire protection anyway. So you now have a dead twelve-inch line running from the pump station at the dam all the way to uh the entrance into right where the Stop and Shop entrance is, that's where that line goes. It would save you a couple million dollars, just Mass Highway's layout alone. Cause you could sleeve that through the twelve-inch under the bridge. In all of Mass Highway's property, you wouldn't even need a a permit to do it, because it's, you're just sliding it inside. That's huge. Just the construction of a, and it doesn't matter what size, it could be a two inch, and it's gonna cost you as much as an eight inch to go through Mass Highway layout and what they require.
Yeah, that's everything we've talked about a ton of times, right? Is what the permitting and how it would look and the cost of once you're getting, dealing with Mass as it relates to Mass Highway. So you're saying that is huge. Thank you.
Alright, but so yes, just to move forward here, so we're using the existing eight inch, right? Diameter? That's kind of our, six inch can't, you know, can't get sleep through the eight inch anyway, so.
And it doesn't make sense to coat the inside, and the coating only lasts for so many years. A lot less than the epoxy coating that's on the pipe, no?
Perfect. Yeah. Okay, so um all in motion that for the uh force main uh um sewer line engineering project, we reuse the existing eight inch.
Option two.
Option two, yeah.
Motion made.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I appreciate.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I had to resign from the Economic Development Kit uh Commission and Historical Commission because of my work in town, but I'm still open to help the boards as they need it for the water and the sewer.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate that.
Very much.
We do appreciate your knowledge.
Okay, so now we're gonna want to agenda item eleven. Right? No, ten, ten, sorry. Alright, this is a discussion of whether to declare the old plywood shed a surplus and dispose of it as a uh to an entrusted employee. Cool with me? Any questions or concerns?
No.
Thank you for taking it.
Alright, so with that, on to motion to declare the old plywood shed a surplus and dispose of it to an entrusted employee.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now move on to eleven. Discussion of whether to approve proposal for Banner Environmental for uh asbestos abatement services for the town hall bathrooms. Oh, wow. I, I, when I was reading this earlier, I was thinking that they were talking about the Red Building.
I thought the same thing.
I didn't like, I didn't process all that. So it's like nine grand?
Yeah.
Ninety-eight, seventy-seven.
Ten, almost ten grand? Alright. Don't think we have much of an option here?
Yeah, the asbestos has to be removed before we can do the construction on the new bathroom, so they're gonna take the flooring out completely. And I wanna say the ceiling as well.
Asbestos is such a.
And it's only gonna take them two days, so it'll be time simultaneous with our, you know, bathroom project.
Yeah, okay.
And I guess my only question is, is they will, obviously, they're gonna do what they can to keep, will they do it on a weekend or?
They're gonna have to do it when there's no employees in the building. It'd be too much distraction, even if they, let alone the asbestos piece of this, but.
Yeah, I guess I just work, I understand they can do whatever they can to encapsulate it, but still, because of what it is, you're gonna make employees nervous if they know that they're rightfully so, they're in there moving the stuff around.
Right, it's just loud, and they're gonna be ripping floors out, and the bathrooms are gonna be unusable.
Keep everything off, right? And like, do, yeah, alright. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposal from Banner Environmental for asbestos uh abatement services for town hall bathrooms.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor? Alright, now we have some donations. So this is, we have a um this is a support Earth Day event. So Advance Air donated a hundred dollars, and A-hole will Stop and Shop. I, they changed their name since.
A-hole is the parent.
I know, I know A-hole, because I I used to work with them a lot, but there's a second.
Oh, oh, yeah.
We must have merged, that's new, new, at least new to me. They donated a thousand dollars. So first of all, thank you very much. That's amazing. We appreciate it. But with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Advance Air donation for a hundred dollars, and the A-hole for Stop and Shop donation for a thousand dollars uh in support of Earth Day event.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think it's gonna be April twentieth, Earth Day.
Is it, is it always April twentieth or no?
I don't know.
It's like, I think the twenty-second is the actual Earth Day, right?
Well, the event is gonna be April twentieth.
Okay. Alright. Agenda item thirteen, discussion of vote whether approve the agreement to the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth and the town of Freetown. This is for the um. So can you explain this to me a little bit?
Uh we have student or nurses coming on Tuesday, working with um Lori Desmaris at the C O A, doing blood pressures and whatnot. So it's a program, sort of just a mutual program. Um they come and that's just there's no liability to the town. They come, they're insured under the school, but they're just, it's sort of just a internship type thing.
Awesome. Any questions or concerns?
No. No.
Alright, that's great. Okay, with that, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the University of Massachusetts Dartmouth and the town of Freetown.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we got fourteen done, so I'll kick it over to the selectmen, whoops, for personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item agenda fifteen, discussion vote on whether to approve the following appointments. A, Michael C. Lucier as traffic controller effective two seventeen, twenty twenty-four through six thirty, twenty twenty-four. B, Kylie Botalio, recording clerk for the Economic Development Committee, Building Committee, Finance Committee, Conservating Library Committee, Building Committee, Bylaw Review Committee, and Commu- and Commission on Disabilities. Any question, concerns, comments? Pretty straightforward. I detain the motion to approve Michael Lucier as traffic controller effective two seventeen, twenty twenty-four through six thirty, twenty twenty-four. And Kylie Botalio as the recording clerk for the committees identified in section fifteen B.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah. Uh agenda item sixteen, discussion of vote on procedure to follow when a sexual harassment claim is made. As you gentlemen may remember, everyone watching at home, about a year ago to today, we decided to move forward with different policy procedures. This one happens to be sexual harassment. This is just detailing the procedures to take of such an event doesn't occur while uh as an employee in town.
Wow, it was, yeah.
Yeah.
It literally was a year ago to that.
Yep.
Yep, that looks good to me.
Yeah, I mean, I don't say this, I think it's all fall in line with the way it should.
Yeah, pretty straightforward um.
Not overcomplicated, so people know how to react, and you know, sometimes things become convoluted when you add too much. So I, I think it's a good representation of the way things should happen.
One of many policies and procedures that are being updated. Um so this is just a
For employees.
For employees' requests, so. If no one has any further discussions or comments, I detain the motion to approve the procedures to follow when a sexual harassment claim is made.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
You're, you got off free tonight, Jared?
Yes, I did.
All set? Alright, we're gonna sign and adjourn. Yeah, any public, I mean. Okay, just one mixtape? Oh, maybe there's another one. Oh.
I heard that noise. I'm like, I should have never heard that.
Mixtape.
Alright, when you guys hear the word mixtape, what do you guys think of? The eighties? Cassette tape. What was the procedures to make them record? What'd you have to do? Little piece of tape over it? Double button, record and play at the same time?
This one, you just have it turned upside down. Call this the second tab one, where it's just trouble design, I think. And then verify that with Verka. It just shows charm.
Just one page in this, yeah.
Just the state wants one signature.
I get nervous when I see that tab and don't have any way to sign.
She's got a swirl train.
I know, it's crazy. I know, it's just, it's well, this last six months have gone by pretty fast for me, you know, in general, just having a child and everything.
Spit my dick, keep it margarined, retain, drop them things.
We're good? Alright, so uh now everything's signed, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Uh motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.